Six o'clock, we'll call the order, the first order is the question. You will do the minutes of our train's news. And the second, we'll be in the second discussion. See none, all those in favor? Jackie, how you feel about it?
That's everybody.
Members reports will start in. Okay, Jeff, very good. And nothing initially from me, so we'll jump right into the town management. I'll start off with the audio visual, the matter is that Facebook has a new policy in terms of its video retention. So they're deleting those after eighteen thirty days, all your videos are going to disappear for Facebook. So we're not destroying the record. If you want to access past videos of meetings, they're available on YouTube. Anything that's on Facebook will be available on YouTube, so that's when you go to the website. The F W scholarship winner, the twenty twenty four winner was Erin Taylor. She's doing well at hustling her towards a degree in accounting. And the new window is open for the junior graduates, so very little number of people applied this year so far, though we've extended that out until April twenty eighth. So if you are an orange or senior, go to the guidance officer, come to the town office and ask for the VFW scholarship application. It's not a ton of money, it's three or four hundred bucks probably, but it is worth it, I'm applying necessarily, so. The heating fuel bids for next season, main power options contacted us, it's a co-op to buy. They came back with a price of two seven one four six for number two. So anyway, we went to current vendor and they said, how about two fifty six? Relatively negligible in the grand scheme of how much we use as number two, but we were able to get that a little bit lower. And then the one fifty seven price per gallon on propane, we will be on year two, three for that, and then that will go back out. The newsletter, that was submissions were zero Monday. I'm holding that until next week because I'm waiting for some music series stuff to finalize over the weekend and get that information on Monday, Tuesday. Be able to put that out before I mail that out. But that should go out to the printers next week and then you'll need the mailboxes the end of the week of April fourteenth. The downtown flag grant, you remember the Parks Committee had asked for money, you folks blessed that, moved it forward. But the Galen Cole Family Foundation, so that's Cole's Transport, former owner of that, the late owner of that, runs a bunch of different grant programs, and one of them is to be pro America on your Main Streets in Maine. And so they are willing to pay for fifty percent of flags and pole kits if we agree to line our street for two years in a row with minimum. So I reached out to them, it's pretty streamlined, and we were approved within an hour. We were the first ones actually there, so they are doing some very good work and that's going to relieve us of about thousand dollars worth of expense. We'll cut our half the check tonight, and then we're responsible for getting them, putting them up, which we don't want to do anyway, and maintaining those, so good news there. Your waste management fee, we talked about that in the last meeting, but it came in just a little late in the day to put them in, but you'll see your month to month, year over year is up, which has been a good adjustment from what we've seen a couple few months before. We've been flat or slightly down. And then your year to date, which is only two months worth, but that's eleven percent of over previous year in January and February, so good numbers there. I submitted testimony on L D five five seven last week. I was a rare bird in the road, supporting the allowance of A T Vs on public ways. This would lift all restrictions and then allow municipalities, towns and cities to go back and restrict roads that they don't want them on. And then D O T can analyze for safety and restrict them. There obviously they'd be off from roads above fifty five miles an hour. Speed limit, it required additional registration, it required insurance, it required all sorts of different things. But at the end of the day, I think that's going to be all for naught, because every agency is out and against it. Largely, I think, because there's no money in it for them. And then it's going to just take the focus off from the enforcement, it's going to push that to different wheelhouses as opposed to just really awarding service now, so it's not dead, but I don't think that it's going to go very far. Hopefully they can be constructive with that, but needless to say, I thought it was a good opportunity for folks like us, but the people from the city came on begging, like they didn't know how to pass the ordinance through their council, and that was just kind of discouraging, so. Skywigan C D with five seventy six K in it, we renewed that, that's got a term of five months, so that'll then mature in August. That would be probably the last C D informally renewed. And then if we invest in CDs going forward, it'll be under that R F P, it'll come in, or rather in May, and then it'll go out in June. Your parking ride update, we thought we're making good headway with that, I put together the proposal package for D O T. And once we went and submitted that, we triggered the red flag at D O T where, you know, they have a ton of money, you don't really want to commit to anything. And they haven't taken on a new parking ride for a number of years, so they are making some quotes. Larger policy level changes with regards to parking rights, and once they iron that out, then they will come and revisit with us, but it's not dead in the water, but slowed there. Land use violations on the front of your deck, I think when you came in, was an updated junkyard tracker. Greens were highlighted, those greens have been recently visited, received stolen by mail notices of violation. And it is last notice, if you are getting a certified letter from the code enforcement office, there is a strong hint is your final notice, and we will proceed, we will look to proceed to court for enforcement. This is getting old for the folks that are on this list. They are costing us money in enforcement, they are costing their neighbors quality of life, and they're costing themselves quality of life. Please get your mail, please sign for it, please read it, because we are going to start to take action. To the extent of one forty six, Scowhegan Road, we're going to be here next meeting, talking about considering that a dangerous building. That is an old garage out on the left side of Route Two, heading towards the other, again, purple, I think, in color, but not a real roof. Poses a hazard arguably, so that hearing will be before you at the next meeting. We've also sent numerous violations to fifty two Depot Street, this is made a little bit worse. By right of way obstruction as well, so not only is it a righteous junkyard, but there's a substantial right of way obstruction there. So I understand people have tight locks, but it doesn't give you the right to frame to bump public property to store your goods and wares. So needless to say, our next meeting will have a lot of discussion around land use and where we want to go to enforce, because you folks will have to authorize any movement that we make to report to enforce, whether it be with or without legal counsel. We'll have to go on a case by case and take a look at how you want to move forward, so we'll probably have that dangerous building and a move on at least one, and hopefully we'll go rule A D K, which means staff will actually represent the town as opposed to county, so. Sewer rate increase approved, the sewer departments, you probably saw the town report operated and deducted supply beer. They are looking at creative ways, number one, to drive revenues aside from the three seven using. How do you cut costs? And so that's where we're at, ten percent increase will go into effect June the first. That will be included in the newsletter, so everybody gets it, it's not about face mailing the notification on that. And then they're going to get together in June or July to talk about those different opportunities. And one of them will be solar placed at the sewer plant. It's not going to happen very quick, but we have opportunity there, and so I'm working, actually Robbie, who is the chair of the sewer commission, said they've done it, are working on it out with Ken Beck. And so I'm exploring that with revision energy to talk about what can we get for offsets? Do we fund it upfront, do we allow them to find a funding partner, and we take a lesser game or lesser savings or another? Work all that out, so I had a meeting with them today, I have another meeting with them next week, they're going to pull up these cost analysis for us, talk about upfront investments, which is probably a million if we're going to do that, and then watch the payoff over time, well, we can find a third party investor and our savings would be less, but it would still be a savings, so. We'll be able to consider those types of things, and I've also asked them to take another look again at the airport, so we'll keep an eye on that. The music series playing, that is just about ironed out, the Parks Girls got together last night. And it looks like we're going to start the first week of July, so the fourth and fourth of July, we will start, and that will run nine weeks. We've also had the commitment for from Franklin Savings Bank to be that lead sponsor again. And Matt Libby from the investment firm, the town uses Choice Wealth Advisors, has stepped up and said I will be involved in that too. So it sounds like he is going to be providing a weekly raffle. It'll be a nice cooler bag with merchandise, things like that, it'll be raffled off weekly. And the idea is that hopefully we offer a fifty dollar gift card to the food truck that's coming in the next week, that would also be included in it. And we're talking about other ways that you can get involved, whether it's radio, probably bringing raw people in, not quite explain that, but it's a good collaboration there so far, and if anybody else has any way that they think that they can become involved, aside from just giving cash, the event would be paid for, but if there's another way that people want to get involved and make it a better experience. Also, I'm going to have that final list of performers next week, and then I'm going to work on food trucks. Food trucks, we want variety, so if you have ideas on food trucks, please call or email me, and I will do the best I can to accommodate the people that are in. Once I get the music done at the fair, at least, we'll go live on the webpage and on Facebook and start to get some traction there, but all very positive. Your plate reservation information is in here for the new plates that will start with May first. If you have a plate that you like, or you have a vanity plate, you have to give the good governor an extra twenty five dollars in advance, or you lose that plate. It is a pain, but that's what they've asked, and so that's what you need to do, that's live linked here in the document, it's posted online. And then we also have the paperwork here at the office. Your community service day with the high school group, that sign up is also available here on the live document in the town office, we can help you with that, you can call us and we can help you get signed up as well, and in your upcoming slate of new meetings. And the planning board meeting from next week is questionable, because we may not have a good starting point with the subdivision ordinance, if they're looking to. Let's see, number six here, discussion action on April second, general warrant number seven.
I want to approve general warrant number seven in the amount thirty five thousand five hundred nine dollars and three cents.
Second, motion on the second, any discussion?
What is, we don't find any services, that's not the guy, like the presentation we had last meeting?
Well, that's our credit card.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, no question, I wasn't sure either.
And what did we get from the?
We get outfits, is. Yes, it's Todd Smith bought company back in Skywigan, and he was the one that, Todd, you spoke to this group about that. I think, so I mean, where we thought it was better.
Oh, that's okay, it's not one of us, all right, I was thinking it was some sort of cloning thing, you know, like, all right, yeah, I know. That's all I've got.
He, he ended up with some fire inventory.
Yeah, I remember you saying that, that there was excess stuff, I'm going to go on a, I just didn't know what it's called, we get out of this.
Anything else? See none, all those in favor? Is everybody? Public comment?
Why?
Anything? Well, see, nothing, we'll probably comment, we'll dive in. Review and assign member annual disclosures. Everybody has a disclosure in front of them for the receipt of draft last week, if you can please sign, we'll get that, and you leave it here, actually, if you can cycle it down, once you cycle it down to me, that will cover off on your policy. Special action on tip committee recommendations. We have a number two applications, they're not going to be back, those are in depth today. The first one, the tip committee acted upon the question, perfectly free, and we'll see, the local share would be twenty three oh seventy six nineteen. This proposes a new building, the twenty one twenty twelve building, we'll consider it on River Road, on the right side of River Road, as you're headed towards Skywigan, they're supposed to cheese tastings, cheese really, that means some other things that dovetail into our business there. Because she was.
I know, what's going on, we're okay.
She provided you with building design, she gave you the full explanation. The tip committee namelessly recommends the approval and has presented it, right, and on what this will include, thousands of dollars, seventy six nineteen.
Well, I'm moved to approve that, but, or take the tip committee's recommendation of granting up to twenty three thousand seventy six dollars and nineteen cents.
I'll second, both of them second, any discussion?
You just, that's exciting, but I'll be all good.
Yeah, no, really, that is exciting, yeah, yeah, see none, all those in favor? And that's everybody. The next application of the tip committee review, brought their third properties, they are looking at additional properties, the exterior one Main Street. This is largely a roof replacement, as well as sign replacement in terms of socket wrapping. The total project cost there exceeded fifty thousand dollars. They recommended from the tip ability was to support the program maximum up to twenty five thousand, if anybody wants to brand share for the improvement there. This is the one right here on the corner, if you give it a like, it's on the left. It used to be a single fin, it's running, and now it's going to be a supported, and it was converted recently to something with the levels. I make a motion, if you, tip committee, twenty five thousand in district property.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion on the second, under discussion. Of course, it would have to be with this, but actually, I think you're both fantastic. But for me, this is a rental and not, I don't know what right words here. It's not necessarily a business with a storefront, so I, I think with this one right here, it sets a precedent. I myself have multiple rental properties right here on the Main Street. If this were to be approved, I would follow suit myself, as well as anyone else with a rental here on Main Street. And I don't feel that this was really the intention of the original T I F setup, was to go to rentals as to where at least myself, I, I don't view a rental as the same as a business with a storefront.
Yeah, if we have anything that's like precedent, like similar to this, or is this kind of the first of its type?
This is the first that we've seen that's actually just a rental property and not an actual storefront work.
I get, yeah.
Place of business, if there was a dented office inside it, then I would say yes, because the rest of the building, right? But, but without that business piece, I really struggle, and I think that if we were to award this, that we would get kind of inundated with more. And I think that would quickly burn up all of our T I F funds, because then how do I separate their rental from my rental or my brother's rental? Where, and where do you draw the line with that? I mean, if someone else on Main Street rents a room, would that qualify their home then on Main Street?
Yeah, it's, it's tough, I, I selfishly, I don't like anything from the downtown, that's ultimately to get like, so like, yeah, like, I mean, from like a downtown revitalization, I for it, but I see that, you're right, like, is it following the guidelines and like the initial what the tip committee was set forth to try to do, are we?
But you have put a lot of money out of the tip district too.
Yeah, boy, it's not, it's not in the tip, I mean, that's certainly in our tip district.
The tips, like, what is it, like, and it's kind of like, and it's bylaws, well, well, but like, what is their mission statement? Like, what is the goal of, like, do they have, you know, a set framework that they're saying, this is what this money is intended for, or is it loose? Guilty.
So the T I F itself is, I'll say, economic development, that's the subtitle for that. Their program goals are to increase economic vitality within the means to market properties located within the county, to restore and preserve the character of what, to heighten awareness of Norwood's starting commercial environment, and to increase foot traffic and sales for businesses, their aesthetic improvement.
Well, takes two of five boxes, like, going by that, like, it certainly doesn't meet like all.
Right, well, it's not, it's not, it's not totally.
Which is what makes things not ugly, like, I, you know.
Actually, the business, I mean, the rental business is actually making it look better, and it's.
You're right, yeah.
Yeah, I would like buy a building and sit on it as a investment, that's still a thing as too, though, that's.
This is tough, so that's what kind of caught my attention, I was concerned that if we do this, that we would then be, you know, we I mean, I know I would fall asleep with at least two boxes, so I, and I'm just, how do you prioritize, I mean, we only have so much money in this tip account, the amount that goes into it each year is dwindling. So, and I just, if we were to start up next year with five, you know, properties of a similar structure that were looking to do the same thing, that were just rentals, do we want to empty ourselves out into rentals and then not have money for a storefront business? That was my, that was my worry, and I didn't know if we should kick it back to T I F to see if they would give it some more clarification or kind of look at how we, I don't, we're going to set a precedent right here, if we approve this one, and you're, you're fantastic peak, it's not for that reason.
You want, yeah.
Where a similar conversation ha- happened at the fifth meeting, I don't know if you have to watch it, but ultimately they did decide to support it. We totally understand what you're saying, and like, see the gray area. I think our understanding of the facade program was what you're speaking to of like, the facelift aspect and improving the aesthetics, and our project aside, we, we care about the town, and with like the sidewalk project coming and everything, personally, I think it'd be really great if there were five people who came, and they were like, there are five buildings we want to review specifically in the downtown area. And maybe that's just an area that needs to be prioritized, but if you walk through, a majority of those are residential, and it'd be nice to see them.
Yeah, and I mean, that building is extremely visible, I mean, like, every time you're at the lights, right there. You know, like, there's a big frame, and I want us to make sure that looks nice, because when it doesn't look nice, it's, you know, really crappy. The flip side of that too is like, downtown has like a history of rental properties making downtown worse, and so I think that, I mean, I don't want to give you guys, like, the benefit of the doubt versus someone else, man, like, I know you guys are going to let it become like a crap hole. Like, you're not going to let your renters, like, you know, put seven cars out on and have their trash everywhere, I know that you guys won't do that. How do we, if someone else comes to the same thing, am I going to be like, oh, big project, I'm just going to keep it clean, but like, are, like, how do I evenly put that out, but like, for me, doesn't check all the boxes, but the whole thing is downtown vitali- revitalization, and if we clear up a crap hole, it kind of feels like.
Was the last one, you just okay, fit all you want to go?
Which one was that one?
That was my question, you, you've got a. Yeah, but you guys have always got a corridor down, it's always been in the Main Street, and it's always been.
We did want to put like a garage and stuff like that, we've done it like all the way down.
Okay, well, just see, when it started out, it seems to me when it started out a few years ago, you had to pretty much be in this corridor, or even be.
So, so we, we initially, we did have a tip district with a map that we had to set up.
And then it became like economic development for your block, so that's how it turned out.
So it's not a matter of being in the downtown.
And that one you just approved was, as for a Skywigan business, I mean, she's in Norwood, but it's in the business path in Skywigan.
Yeah, well.
That would, but she's not, but she's not going to sell cheese there.
So from what I understand, she, Amy's not here, but because the manufacturing of the cheese is done at that facility, there's a lot of stipulations and rules when it comes to food safety, so she can't have events, can't have things in that physical location, plus it's really small. So this is going to give more of like a a completely different type of business and space in Norwood, I mean, I think you look at things like, you know, it's not through the scale, but like, Big Little Brewing and all these different places where it's bringing people in for food, I mean, can't be bad to bring people in, and it might be people that typically wouldn't come into Norwood Walk or something like that, so like that, I, yeah, I'm, I'm hundred percent. And I guess even for me, I'm going to say that, like, with this, I know it's a gray area, but I also know that if, like, somebody else don't want to sit around the town, if they want to get nice, I'll, I feel like I want to help it later. I, I mean, you are the one who talks the most about, I want to walk into the site, it looks like that, so.
Again, I, I.
Yeah.
I think, like I said, I'm not against it, I just.
You just get to say, carry.
Have that conversation with the T I F committee, because it sounds like they had the same discussions, just so we've got there, but you know, so we're all kind of.
They did want on River Road, it's really not a working business, they put twenty five thousand in.
Which one?
Norwood, that bond roofing sign, he's not shipping it, you cut a little hay, that's not a real.
I mean, selling hay, that is.
We're selling the meat and stuff out there.
Right, right. They offer a storefront, if you will, you were to go there and purchase something, the creamery place, you're going to be able to go there, either purchase or go there.
Yeah, you can have vents there, something like that, yeah, that's.
It's a destination opposed to, well, my apartment, you know what I mean, nobody's going to come visit my apartment unless you're renting it, you know, there's no, it doesn't, let's, it, I can't say it doesn't attract new business, right, nice buildings.
Or you've got affordable houses on your table.
Yeah, yes.
One person went in there to.
You've got affordable houses.
Yeah, oh, very true, I, I, I'm very much on both sides of it, I just, do we get clarification on how we separate privately owned rental properties, really, you know what I mean?
When they get the.
How do you separate?
The school, Sula, I think, with that, like, anything that's not on that main drive, that, for me, that's what I would say, like, if it's on that main stretch from Mill Stream to Sula, I feel like that is where we're focusing our.
But you've gone outside that so much.
You've heard the apartments and stuff like that.
Paper wrote on it.
And I, and Sue, I, both, you're, you're both correct, and I, I feel that's why we need to go back to T I F for clarification on how exactly we want to set a precedent, I mean, you, you don't check all the boxes, but you check enough, right? You're, you're right there, and you're, you're one of the most visible properties when you come into the center of our town. So if something was going to qualify, that would be the one, but we can't say yes to yours and then no to next four that come in because, well, we respect one something else. So I don't know if we need some guidelines on how we, I'm just going to use yours and mine for the, you know, how do we separate mine from his? What makes his more, you know, susceptible to the funds versus one of my rental properties?
Yeah, I, well, I think that that's where, I mean.
And will we limit how much we put on private rentals versus saving for business? And do we want to empty our stuff out into rentals and not have funds for a business?
I mean, how much do I mean, I don't think we're going to drain it off the twenty five at this point, right, like this.
Well, I think we received about a hundred twenty thousand dollars last year. And we awarded a couple of smaller projects, and then fifty to twenty five plus twenty four, the second number.
I mean, I feel like case by case, we can, I mean, it's always good to have established parameters set just to make things easier, so there's not subjectivity.
I see they voted unanimously.
Yeah, so they were, for me, I think that, you know, I, I think having the ability to take things case by case and discuss it as, you know, a board, that leaves us the opportunity to maybe, something that might be on the outskirts, if we set a parameter that we can't do or we would like to do, but then because we put this in here, I think we just do case by case, and so like, for me, that is right smacked out in the middle. It's supposed to make the downtown nicer, more pleasant, like, a business would want to come in if they weren't looking at. Like, for me, they went over with the tip committee, they had the same complaint that we did, and they unanimously said yes, so I mean, for me, we don't typically deviate from their recommendations, so I'm going to say go for it.
Devil's advocate on that, I would also just say no, it's a precedent, and did they have that discussion, what does it open up for, I granted, I, I get the rest of it, and I'm not downplaying, because I, I'm all for, I'd love to be able to do it. But at the same time, do that one, and then four more come up, but we approved two and then three because we're out of money, we have to say no. Or we get one that we say no to.
How do you score them against each other?
Right.
So now, getting your questions in, it's like, you don't put money there when it's gone.
It sets some guys up.
Should, should something happen down here on large field.
Oh, sorry, sorry, go ahead, as long as Mike spoke, I guess I can speak, I, I hate to, I hate to speak about anything, and I love both of these individuals. But if, if you, I kind of agree with Matt, if, I mean, the bottom of page one of the application says residential structures are not allowed. They do talk about multi-use purposes, but maybe the T I F committee can clarify, okay, for residentials, we can do twenty five percent instead of fifty, oh, yeah. That's up to them to do, I don't care, one way or the other. And if you, if you look at definitions generally of residential properties, it includes anything, it can be multi-use, I mean, it can be, you know, multi-human environments, condos, you know, everything.
And then I don't, like, are you, I don't, can I ask, I mean, are you, are you guys in LLC or you private?
No, it's all private. And that really doesn't matter.
Yeah, I mean, same with the LLCs, afterwards, anyways, right?
And I don't know, like, if that would matter on T I F, would it matter if it was?
And they want.
Right, so I don't.
By the person, right, I mean, I, I think, you know, guidelines are always a good idea, right, it's something to, to follow, but I think it brings always deviations with it, right, some scoring criteria might not be a bad idea, like, how visible is it, right? I think something to consider with those guidelines, it also calls out no bars. You know what I mean, we gave money to six penny. You know what I mean? We gave money to Six Penny.
You know.
Does it really say no bars?
Oh, a hundred percent, yeah.
It did, it did last.
Clearly.
We must have plugged in the bar.
Yeah, yeah. So like, again, not trying to like say like, oh, hey, you went, you went against it once, I'm going against it, that's not what I'm saying, but I mean, like. I'm, I'm all for guidelines, I think there's a lot of value in it and, and scoring criteria and stuff, but. You know, I think we're, we're trying to fix the town up, we've obviously put in windows, doors, you know, we're trying to turn it with the town, this building, super visible building, right? Obviously not saying we're not gonna do. Yeah, obviously I'm not gonna do the work, you guys are fun, you know, part of this and funness.
Right.
Um, but you know, I think it's a, it's a good opportunity to put, you know, give, give that door a facelift, you know?
Yeah.
And, and, you know. You know, you said you have a couple of buildings downtown.
Yeah, right.
So I think there's value in that, so I was saying like, hey, maybe, maybe it is twenty-five, I, I don't know what the answer is, but. I think there's guidelines in there too. Percentages of the tips that can be used for this program, so it's like not gonna drain the, you know, not gonna drain the Tiff and. You know, you can always go aside, aside grain and give Tiff funds to, you know, just straight to.
You know, I, I don't know, it's just.
I love you both, so I can stop feeling like I'm advocating for ourselves, cause I, I also feel like it's a bigger thing that I'm like, how could you do that? I would argue that to your point, we're like, oh, maybe like residential, we, we want to save it for the businesses, but. Businesses who are coming to Norwich Rock are, are probably gonna do these things no matter what, whether or without. The support of the Tiff, like I think Six Penny would have been Six Penny without it, should the town still fund projects like that, like yes, absolutely, that's a good partnership. Um, again, if we're, we're doing the sidewalk thing and we want the whole downtown to get a facelift. It's also an incentive program, so maybe some people who own residential properties down there would be like, well, okay, if the town's gonna help me, maybe I will. Like finally do that, whereas when it's a business, you want to do that anyway, cause you're gonna, you're investing in, in that way. That, that's about the last one.
Yeah.
All down, I mean, really, yes.
It'd be nice if they'd beaten it up and made it nice, then ran it downtown, like, and now we're privately not into business, like.
Yeah, what's the difference between a private residence, something you're living in yourself versus like a rental property that you're owning for a business, right?
Right.
Or, you know, for income property, I mean, there's a difference there, I mean, five unit building, is that commercial? It is technically.
Yeah, if they're five, right.
Anything over four. Right, but like, under this would be residences, there's, there's always a gray area, right, you know? Or if you get, you know, commercial, if you have five single family homes. Right, you could do, there's just so many gray areas and I get it.
Yes, and I, I, again, we all know you guys and it's.
Yeah, no, there's no, no.
Fantastic, it's like, yes, you, I think you guys do a wonderful job with it, but if we okay it for you, I, I've. Gotta basically do it the same for everybody else that follows suit, uh, whether it's me or any of the other, and, and our, our mainstream is. Pretty close to predominantly rentals, or people live in them and rent the upstairs. So, uh, where do you draw that line? I do mean, you know, is next year just going to be doing those on Main Street?
What was the reason they went outside the Tiff district? Cause they didn't, couldn't get rid of the money, right?
Cannot remember what mostly caused us to get out of that solid map we had. There are, there's still the focus area, the, the Tiff, the Tiff runs up Sophia Main Lane and follows the pipeline. It's transit oriented, right? So it's about transportation and things like that. Um, there are certain programs that are townwide programs. There are certain programs that are restricted to the Tiff zone. And then there are just certain projects that have no geographical limitations, uh, but they're projects, so allocating money to the fire station. Sewer line extensions and things like that, those are all building.
Well, that back to the Tiff, that, a lot of Tiff money, when that fire station, if I remember right.
That was like, that was a designated project that the voters approved when the Tiff was approved by voters. There are breakout projects at the end, there, there are grant programs like this that has a section of funds allocated to it. And then there are more specifics. Then there are just restrictions, I think what you think of as the Tiff district is what the Tiff committee and the revitalization committee.
I came in.
A focus area.
At first that, and my building gets kind of ratty, you know, and I didn't push it, I was at a, outside the Tiff district and I never said. Boom.
So the facade program is a townwide program. The focus area that you've seen a lot of, and you see the map with the blue perimeter is something that the revitalization committee group. Or consult the revitalization committee group, and the Tiff committee has long said, we would love to be telling people, no, 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 no. But they don't have people lining up at the door, and that's when they started to fund projects further out from town.
And there, I know that they have put in something for kind of like a small, like micro loans for starting a business. I think we have for like a hundred thousand, has that been utilized by businesses somewhere?
So there's still. Financing that's available, I think right now, uh, the top of my head, there's a note for fifteen and a note for twenty-five. That's loaned out, they're all good standing right now, there's a balance there, um. And I just talked to somebody last week that thought that they might go back to that as a funding mechanism.
Mm-hmm, okay. And with, there's no issues with, if that, you know, completely exhausted itself, that not that they've set aside, but that was still plenty of other money in that. Account to keep putting other stuff, like that's.
That's set aside money, it's not, we, we don't have that money, we sent that to SEDs.
Okay, all right, yeah, so that's already been taken account for.
That isn't a factor, however, we have to. You know, uh, less approved expenses were in the ballpark of five hundred thousand. So it, it's not that we don't have the money.
Matt?
It's, I, uh, please talk.
Uh, could you do both? Uh, approve the Vicfords' application because it meets the criteria of the facade improvement program as written? And direct the Tiff committee to tighten up the criteria of the facade improvement program so that it doesn't. Get. Spent in all the wrong places. Couldn't you do both?
I, I certainly, I certainly could.
Cover it though, that's the.
It's just a matter of do we approve this one before we get clarification, or do we ask for a clarification and some guidelines? And then, you know, have this one check all the boxes, uh.
But it's just that their application met it at, at the time they submitted, it meets the criteria.
Yeah, yeah, on, on initial, it, it.
And there's no, no harm in rewriting the criteria, I know the Tiff committees is revisited that before, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Has, has the board gone against the Tiff committee before?
We've asked, but we've gone less than.
Well, I'm not really going against it. The select board remanded one to the committee and asked the Tiff committee to reconsider.
Yeah.
Um, and that was Everett's tire. And all rails, asphalt paving, how much were you gonna pay for paving and there were concessions to be made and. And the reason why was the visibility of the location. Nobody wants to be in this paying for pavement, but because of its location, that was what was agreed. And they wrote, they'll give you twenty-five percent now, and if you do these improvements, we'll give you twenty-five percent.
Didn't we decide that it was within that? The land that spoke up to say that one of them said not residential, so it's.
It's not, it's not, it's not.
It's not clear.
Right, it's not explicitly prohibited, there's a section that says prohibited properties.
Gotcha.
And it's not within that, it's within the definition. Yeah, that is, there's a definition, it's within definitions, it's the same amount of the definition, and again, I think the intention. Not what I, like, not our committee, is for like private residences, like houses. I think it's more versus apartments, but I, I, and I don't know, I don't, you know, I don't want to put word in his mouth.
I, yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't know that. Dangerous rumor if they were talking about private houses, so.
Honestly, like, I don't think I'd feel any difference with a private house coming here versus them if it's right smack in the downtown, like.
You would, yeah, did you say you'd be for that, or?
Yeah, like I would, cause there's a bunch of dumps and I'd like it to look nicer, like I feel like I would say yes, because they look like crap. And what business wants to be next?
I couldn't support that, cause I'm not gonna put a roof onto a house, it doesn't.
Well, I think. Yeah, I think it depends on what they're doing, like, you know, doing your roof or something like, like that's less making it visible, it's getting aesthetic of the thing, but like if you were, you know. Making like the front of your house, so it didn't look messy or something like. Feel like, anything that makes downtown look better, I would probably.
See, so you see the slippery slope that starts, right? Cause my house is fifty-year-old, I use a paint job box and a roof painter.
But, I like, like, Sue, though, like, Sula to the school, like, that stuff I feel like. Should have a different set of rules when it comes to that kind of stuff than outskirts.
I agree, because I think part of it is to draw out town and we're gonna only attract people who are businesses here if we look better.
That's right.
If we're not trying, then I'm gonna.
The downtown with the, it's not the businesses that are making the downtown look crappy, it's a lot of the residential things and. We can't get businesses to come in and take up those spaces, if, so it's like, we need to make these concessions and. For one thing, it makes their downtown look better, but then the economic, long-term development that could be more businesses. That have a storefront could likely want to come in because they don't have a crap hole next to them.
Yeah, I, yeah, you are all correct.
I agree, but that, I'd love to see.
Yes.
Strictly guideline and/or a town vote that says, okay, we'd like the town to do that. Section of it, if we're gonna all change the whole parameters of it.
Without P.
To, for that, because I, I just, I have a hard time saying.
With what we have in front of us, right? Uh, for them, we can either go with the Tiff committee's recommendation and approve it, or you can vote against it, depending on your feel, uh. Or we can kick it back to Tiff, or like Todd said, we can approve it and then ask Tiff to, I, I'm. I don't want to say I'm comfortable with any outcome, uh. But I would entertain a motion, I. So you, are you gonna vote okay?
Yes, I, I think the motion's there, we vote on it, and then I think we circle back with the Tiff committee and let them know. I think I'd be fine with being like, I want the whole downtown to look nice, are you guys on board? Now, let's make some.
Right, all down, all down. Uh, but, sorry, wait, yeah. Uh, no matter how the motion settles, I think it would be prudent to then make a motion. Whether you approve it or deny it, to put a moratorium on applications for facade improvement installed. Until you get this ironed out. Okay, yeah, you're welcome. And because other than that, you're gonna sit here and you're gonna have the same debate again the next time, and you've talked about location, you've talked about project sensitivity, you've talked about housing, you've talked about. Of increased in housing capacity. I would suggest that that be a topic of discussion once this issue settles out, no matter how it's settled, whether you act them or you approve or deny. I think that would be the prudent thing, you need to ask the Tiff committee to develop this for your consideration sooner rather than later. Cause you don't want to stop the pipeline of applicants incoming. Okay, uh, so there's a motion of second, uh, to go with the Tiff committee's recommendation, uh, unless there's further discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, and then, right, okay. Uh, and if you want an official motion review.
I want to make a motion that we ask the Tiff committee to look at the parameters and make something more specific so that. We can understand this situation better.
You'd be some impervious for a moratorium?
There you go, and moratorium on this until they. But with the next meeting, though, that's the thing, like, I don't have a moratorium. Okay, so it is this month, okay, so a moratorium until it's been discussed and we get their feedback.
You want to put a time limit on that, cause that could drag for a year, a year problem.
No.
We're hoping they bring it up at the next meeting on the twenty-third, we're like, yeah.
And we get their information back, yeah, so I would say more time until May first at least. And then we can reevaluate May first if we're ready to lift the moratorium.
Good, we're muted.
Is that on all properties or just the housing?
Just any Tiff applications, period, I think.
Facade.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's specific.
Yep.
Cause you don't want to give somebody else an advantage, if they want to promote projects like this, they recommend promoting projects like this, you don't want the other businesses to have that strategic advantage. Just my thought, freeze them all, but I won't take them, they can hold them, I won't.
Alright, alright, so there's more to the second.
More second, uh, we've got a discussion on it, if not, all those are favored. That's everybody. Thank you, guys, right, I'm not a dick, I swear.
I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, number ten here, especially on twenty-five votes, uh, for ATV use. The item usually appears on the second of April of June, but because of everything going on and courtesy to the sportsman's group. Um, I pulled it up to this meeting, this is the same list as their work plan beer and is for your consideration.
So is it the only roads or are we adding?
Uh, no, that's just, uh, that's every, everything, and all was, the ones highlighted here are just the state has to technically.
Okay, all right.
And either every year or do we have the same running list? We give a, this is if the Paul and Rose State Roads, you have to go to D R T, we don't need to do it. The pipeline is really what it amounts to for us, all town home and day road are open for use.
All right, okay.
If they're signed appropriately. When would we know about these roads? Does the state have to get your name those for us, or will we post them? That's the Sportsmen's Association.
Okay, the sport. Is that like a renewal, cause it's more, maybe we have those, okay, they said, yeah, do we, so like every year, we have to get them to be like thumbs up.
I don't vote for the Sportsman's Association in the state roots.
Okay.
They sign those appropriately, the last, I knew we had limitations to, um, like route two, they, you're allowed to go to a school store.
Kind of same, so.
But you had to come to a school store from the other.
I mean, first on River Road, am I gonna get listed?
You're allowed to go from the Maple, last year you're allowed to go from the end of Maple Street to Route One N.
Right. Okay.
If you want to go to a school store from here, you have to go up Upper Main Street, Winding Hill, Beddeman Road, Airport Road, down to Sula Store. Yes, as well, be able to run them.
You want, like, the intersection, I get that.
The state says that you're not here to have the most direct route if you're out recreating on your ATV.
You're recreating.
Sense, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So Richard, you have to revisit each year, you have, you have to approve this again each year, so just because you say Winding Hill is on the list this year, you have to do it every year, April, you guys have to.
What we.
Winding Hill is a town.
Yes, yeah, no, that's what we, that's what we've done. We honestly changed it a few times, it had been changed a number of times, but. This is a pretty generous authorization and so it.
Yes, I'm just saying that every year you guys have to revisit this.
Yeah, because if we, if a, if a problem road arose, we would remove it, right? If somebody is abusing that road section, then it could be removed, that, I mean, that's, I think that's.
That's why you guys. Okay, have you, I'm just, I didn't realize you had to have this discussion.
It also sets up the expectations of the Sportsman's Association, if they don't sign it, it's not open. And then that gives us some letters with the folks, the volunteers levering against them, uh, but say, you know, it's gonna be, the sign so it's safe for everybody. Other than that, everybody's exposed liability wise.
Matt, can I get a clarification on Winding Hill Road?
Yeah.
It says all owned roads, town roads, but Winding Hill Road from Chuckie's Farm down to. The Water District Pump House is signed no ATVs.
Yep, uh, that is the only section where we actually have a dirt trail. Uh, one of the people from the Sportsman's Association could tell you where that trail starts and where it comes out, or maybe I could, cause I'm not totally sure.
It's been, last year it wasn't open for a good portion of the year.
Yeah.
So I ignored the sign, but the sign, what I'm saying is the sign on Winding Hill. That excludes that section of road is contrary to. What's published.
We did, I was under the understanding that we had two factors, this was just, and I, I'm not a part of the total, but I was under the understanding that it was. Because of winding hills. Curves, I understand. With the date, the date, the, this serious situation of that hill and the traffic over there, and yet you had an actual trail. That gets you around it, that, and I just.
All good, but it says all town home and day roads, and it goes winding up.
So what, and so if you go up, so if he goes up there, signs, no signs, you're legal to go up and hit, is what you're saying, yes?
Right, because basically you're like, they're, you're right, right, there technically should be some.
It's legal, but not recommended.
Or no, but it actually, no, just for jump, go back.
The town of Norwich Walk is not restricting your access to Winding Hill Road. The local Sportsman's Association, and they, you know, you have a safer alternate route than coming down to Winding Hill. The town of Norwich Walk is not restricting the horde.
All right.
Interesting, but it's only the town of Norwich Walk Road.
But if the roads have to be posted and signed, then you are legally obligated to abide by those postings.
So if you run the hill and. So can I go up that piece of road or not?
Yeah.
Legally?
So it, it is right, but the sports, so to his point, the sportsman clubs posted, then you can't go up it, so I.
So they have sort of.
So Brony's on detail, so if Brony's approving a road and he's on duty and he sees a side by side down over, is that? An offense?
If it's signed, if it's signed.
I've been saying with the, okay.
If the club, if the club did its job and the signs are up and visible, then yes. If, if he gets you and you say, hey, man, there's no sign back there, then that would kind of go beyond the club.
Here we go again, if that trail is washed out, which it is, I know God damn well it is, so you can't get through that.
We, so the, I don't, I, I guess I am a member of the club, uh, so the club, just to, just to prove. Uh, we're putting chips and sand down over that.
Uh we're putting chips and sand down over that because it was logged in park last year, so it was mixed logging, the logging tore it up. We couldn't get in there with equipment.
It closed, it at times closed due to logging.
Yeah. Mostly during.
Then you get to poke by Chuckies and I can't go into town, so like, I can't get to the rail trail for my house.
You valid, yeah.
I'm asking for somebody to remove the.
Make rules on.
The inconsistent requirement, that's like.
I don't know exactly how it was determined that the club would close, well, because it had a safer route around.
But.
But if the town, if they all agree that all these roads are open between the sportsmen's.
They all get worried about that hill not being safe.
Well, I agree why, I.
But I, why is that any more dangerous than fub dubbing around downtown here and carrying on, I'd say you let, the hell with the the town. The club was saying, no, just let him go up and down the hill.
You have an option, you think of an optional trail to go off.
Yeah, cause everyone goes there anyways, and that ain't no one more unsafe than that, when they go to Seward Island two or any other thing.
I think send it back to the sports club to bring up the concern and if they wanna just take that.
Can you just pick it an optional, would you pick an optional route? Just take the sign.
I think that the sign should be up if the trail is accessible and usable, and if it's not, take down the sign, and that has to be like at the sports, I mean like. They're looking at these trails or maintaining them, they're gonna know it like, oh, you can't get in that, move the thing so they can go up the hill, but as soon as it is, restrict it when there's.
So the one portion that says, so what's this part that says the Norwood Sportsman's Association is responsible for showing proper liability insurance, so they have. Are they insured to allow the riders on the road, and if they deem that there's a section of road they don't want them on because it is super dangerous and their liability insurance is gonna have to cover it. I would say they would have the right to close a portion of the road, that's.
That explains it better for me anyway, I didn't understand that part.
One little section on here says that the sportsman's association is responsible for showing proper liability insurance regarding this stuff. So if they're signing the roads and they're the ones responsible for keeping the signs up for the town. If they deemed that a portion of that road is too dangerous to drive on with the ATVs, then yeah, I would say we should. Go with that because it's their insurance, it's in jeopardy if we just bypass it, now if they wanna go back and take a look at it and say, okay, well, yeah, we'll do this. Then that's after the sportsman's club, I would say.
And for us, we just have to, right now, I guess, like, these are other discussions, but all we're doing is like approving what we sent to the state, right?
Ask the sportsman's club.
What we.
Yeah. Clarify or granting the sports association authority to sign and open.
I move to do that.
Yeah, second, motion of second, uh any further discussion? Uh seeing none, all those in favor. Go ask the sportsman's club for a clarification.
I get it now, right, if they're liable, then that makes sense.
That's the one part I picked up out of that place, they're responsible for the signs and the liability.
But that section of road is no more dangerous than up a sandy river, uh chicken street.
The section that was had, this town was gonna hold that section back in previous years. And there was a discussion about buggies and cyclists and pedestrians and motorcyclists all use that same section of road. And have people exposed to harm.
And I think we leave it up to the. But no one's ever got. If their liability insurance has to cover them.
Yeah.
By signing it, they're the ones accepting responsibility.
Did the buggy start using Beddeman or no?
Yeah, they do that.
Not that they had to.
He's still walking down there.
They do.
When that's there and that's a scary situation in itself, I'd rather have an ATV on there than.
Yeah, I agree with that.
No, and I and I understand that, just unfortunately, sports association's insurance doesn't cover the horse.
Uh okay, uh number eleven here, discussion action on appointments.
We have to go to each and every single one and appoint each individual.
You will do each office, you can do in mass, that's how I have it prepped, so you'll start with me at the top and then you'll go through each of the committees and boards.
Alright, so I'll move to approve airport advisory committee en masse as printed.
Okay, so you can't do that, because you have one vacancy at the end of that, you have two applicants. And we need to decide between Mr. Drury and Mr. Newsom, those were applications he received an email on Friday, they're in your packet today.
Unless you want it.
I I probably should take it, cause I feel like that could make us some interesting meetings.
Yeah.
And I just, I don't know, either one first.
Has that jury been on there before?
Didn't really.
He is a former hangar owner and pilot who uh got sick, but he's been helping us with the uh instructing. With the note, remember they had uh surveyed the real stock, hand up to mine, they went out to locate the tree and built into the track. Um he's been volunteering since he gave up everything. And through that is what, when he applied for this.
I'm nominating Bill Drury.
In addition to the rest of the.
Did he just have a third person?
He asked Bill Drury for to to as the one to be nominated for the airport.
Okay, so second.
Well, there's a motion in the second to go over the. Bill?
Uh.
You heard the discussion? Uh seeing none, all those in favor?
And I would just like to thank Phil for applying and to do it again next time.
Yes, yeah, no.
Lots of other words, Phil.
It's it's nice to have it.
That we've got the interest, people that that are looking to be part of that.
So.
Can we bounce back up and do my, is the first section?
At all.
Yeah, at all.
And second.
Motion on the second, any discussion on that? Uh seeing none, all those in favor, that's everybody.
Alright, so I'll move the parks committee, I will move that we appoint the three incumbents as written.
Second, uh motion in the second, uh and here any discussion on that, it's a shame that that one's not full, and you think that would be a fun one, right? Uh two seats available there.
We're done.
Me, yeah, thank you.
In the back of the audience, yeah, I know, correct.
Uh right, uh seeing no discussion, all those in favor, that's everybody, thank them for what they do.
I move to approve the three TIP advisory committee three-year terms. As stated.
Second, uh motion in the second, uh any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor?
Oh, actually, oh shoot, I I didn't do it fast enough, sorry. The three, I feel like we had talked about not as long a term on some of them, or are we, this is a three-year term for those three people, do we?
They're just like every other board committee, well, most other boards and committees in town, we do roads, we do parks. In in the airport, you don't really wanna be in habit every year.
Okay.
No, by the way, there's a vacancy, uh there's a balance of a two-year down below for which I have no application, so.
That's all, sorry.
I'm gonna turn my reservation over.
They're gonna get onto TIP.
That's not, the floor's not open.
Yeah. Uh both in the second, I think almost both there, so all those in favor of the TIP committee, that's everybody.
Um we don't really have a vacant one day, so I'll move that we appoint our big bird for the Norwood Waters District Board Trustees for the three-year term.
Second, motion second, uh any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, that's everybody.
I move to approve Derek Purbus for the three-year term on the right committee.
My second, motion of second, uh any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, everybody.
Um cemetery committee, uh three-year term, Sarah Wilder. Okay, alright, so I will put it out there.
Had me confused, is it Sally or Sarah? There's a motion in a second, uh any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor? Forward.
Alright. I move that we appoint John Mallon for a one-year vacancy in the budget killing.
Second, this is one that might be elected and did not get filled, and John asked if there was a vacancy on the budget committee, then he would love to be appointed to it.
Great, lots of all to do.
That is, yeah, uh seeing no discussion, all of your favor, that's everybody, thank you, John, that's.
I'm gonna appoint the four um people as written to road plan committee for the one-year tours.
Motion, the second, uh any discussion?
It's nice that they all have aliases in this.
Anyway, so the note here is. As long as I've been here, we've had three member at most road committee. And so we had Greg True talk about road a lot lately, and so I said, well, are you interested? Yep, he is, so we invite him here, there's one more seat if somebody is.
We've always, we had five, twenty years ago, we had five.
The only thing I have is being four, like, if you guys ever vote for anything, you could maybe not.
But but the only thing I would say to that one is, again, we don't really have.
The power.
We have no, all we do is like any other committee, is just come up with recommendations to take to you guys, so as far as.
You don't think you're gonna get into a stalemate or target?
I I don't think we've ever come up against that even, no, I I I just don't see it, I mean, you may, the the one thing you may do is. I remember years back, we we voted on, we had a little disagreement about contractors. And, but you just say, you you know, pretty much. They need all the climate and. Yeah, we let you guys.
Alright.
Push it off to you guys.
Alright, so for me, as long as it's not a conflict that they're concerned about, I'm not gonna be concerned about it.
We just don't, we don't vote on anything, we haven't.
You vote on stuff.
Yeah, we do, but it's, yes, that's what it is, we do vote on stuff, but it really isn't like you guys.
But it doesn't seem to be concerned, so I will still move that the, we appoint the four to the road thing for one-year term.
Ten second, motion second, uh any discussion, seeing none, all of in favor? That's everybody.
Alright, I'm moving to approve the one-year vacancy for the planning board.
Second, motion in the second, uh any discussion?
Again, this is one of the ones that was left vacant, he received a nominal number of write-ins, reached out, said, I'm really interested, well, can I get the appointment? So this would just be your next time meeting.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I I recognize his name, I don't know, uh I'll make a motion. No discussion, all those in favor, that's everybody.
Uh so custom, you don't have to, you don't want the customer, like some of the people takes with thirteen, but you don't, that's usually that.
No, you guys.
I sign all that stuff, like.
Well, this is just in case you die or something, you can't go, then you'll appoint the next time. Great analogy.
Yeah.
Uh let's see here, number twelve, a discussion action on land needs for waste fall, uh waste water facility property. Please make sure that you stay behind after the meeting and sign all these appointment paperwork. You have to sign one for every person you just go and order here, so like thirty, just thirty percent.
You move on to Joe.
Oh, yeah, I wrote your name thirty-five times, Joe, I had to write it two hundred once.
Last year, we leased the property to Lynch Landscaping, uh this year they have renewed their request to lease the field next to the street plan. Uh and so I have touched up the lease from last year, I mean, some can, some can believe the same. Um and then that would be on your political consideration.
So I probably can't put the motion out.
I'll take the motion, we.
No.
Motion to accept it?
Yeah.
Any discussion?
They really don't have any complaints or anything in the past.
Got it. Uh so all of in favor, that's everybody, want abstaining?
Yeah, vote, but I.
You want abstaining?
Well, here we go.
Uh all right, special action on culvert maintenance and cleaning.
Well, I I would like to thank, I think Jason was the only one who put everything together here that.
Honestly, so the vendor that provided us his information, watched his meetings on the regular too. He's not missing an opportunity to provide quality service to the down.
It's probably here the next morning.
It was here in the morning.
Sorry, I appreciate that.
Next morning, talking with staff to say, hey, do you find volume in this building, you think, and then he reached out to me later in the day and said, hey, I talked to the guys. They don't really have anything to do with it, but I'm gonna show you how low you can go and how high you can go. So you have in your packet, you have, on the low end of things, you have the eighty thousand dollars equipment. On the high end of things, you've got a fire truck, really, um. I'm not sure if scallywag owns one of those or if they contract, I don't.
Okay, so that's the one you see going around stuffing up all these and stuff.
Yes.
They used to have one, the old one, and I don't know if they've upgraded that or anybody.
Okay, yeah.
So that's a little over half a million bucks from that, so that gives you a range of what you could get for equipment. Uh I don't think that a straight face is gonna pass for half a million dollars, but.
The maintenance on that loan would kill us.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You better be in this status all his life.
Thirty-five years, we should be hiring someone to do this for us.
That's what I wondered.
Maintenance alone on something like that is gonna kill us, my pin, even though we're a long round machine, the little round machine, I know we're gonna do it. You know, fifteen inch vacuum machine with a fan, that was long time ago.
But, at least colors, I mean, yes, what was the major problem with the McIntyre road, or you said something?
Well, like, so like that that one, it's a state culvert.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's about two-thirds full, so the culvert itself, I mean, you've only got about that much of work there, culvert there. Like that one in particular wouldn't be our problem, but I I imagine we have similar issues with our culvert.
Oh shit, you got thousands of them.
Right.
Vacuum rotter system, it's totally uh uh, you know, you get the broader end of vacuum on one unit, one, maybe two people having to work it. It's just a matter of how many culverts they get on a season, you know, how much you wanna pay for it.
The cost is my big concern here, and in looking at this, it's, I know we had joked about the fire department and the whole was worth. But I I mean, how much, I mean, I, would that actually work? To have either public works with a fire truck or I don't, none of our trucks pump any water at the. So would be a fight, so yeah, I mean, is there a plausibility that they're firing and blasting off horse in their downtime?
Do we even have the responsibility for those, when the homeowner has to pay to put them in?
Well, so the homeowner buys the first one, then you maintain the rest for life.
The town maintains ours, yeah.
Right, the town, so yeah, it it's.
The homeowner just picks up the original cost, and that's when I get named, but nine times out of ten. We don't, eh like a contractor, we don't put the culvert in.
Right.
You 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 buy it.
Yeah, no, I know, that's.
If they are, I mean, if they hot top, you dig it up, you re-hot top it, so I mean, it's it's behooves us, right, to to maintain them so that we're not just digging them up.
And they're all just gonna go around work for towns and.
We got one ring, scare we?
Walker, yeah.
This, well, it's it's a republic now, it's Walker. There's several people, there's several companies around that can do it.
I had.
Voting it out and letting them bid against each other, that's your best bet.
Yeah.
There are some DOTs that have them also.
Other companies that will rent them, lease them, and highway does it.
No, if one you could hire, will put them on a schedule.
Liability on that program, you can, you can, I know of several places that you can rent.
Do that.
Equipment, but when you take it as rent, you're liable for that, and if you don't operate it correctly.
What would it cost them, hire for them for a couple days to go around and do?
Probably with two men and a and a piece of equipment, you could be in a two, two hundred fifty dollar range an hour.
Yeah, yeah.
And you gotta, but you gotta, I think you're better off to have them inspected out per culvert, cause then it makes them, you know. They're not gonna be standing against a shovel for twenty minutes of that.
Yeah, you wanna know, you wanna have work for them, you get them there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you don't wanna say, oh, I think that one might be fun. Oh, there's nothing in there.
Cover the vacuum or are they gonna actually put water through it?
No, cause I think that you hose, well, vacuum rotter, it's got a big hose, it's gonna go through a culvert this big or this big. And it's gonna be able to pull up material back to the vacuum when it's on one end or the other. And haul it off, and and the debris body's a lot bigger, they'll use it fourteen yards, twelve or fourteen yards on them.
So in that case, we just have brought you around and survey the culverts that. It's not just the broad, we need a culvert.
Makes a list.
Yeah.
Does that, and I, and just to see, I heard you say, road, taking out a road really budget, I, I, we don't have much budget then. You're right. Don't catch me on that account.
We pick it up on the DOT. So maybe that's the thing we do is look at some.
Walk.
Pricing options. I think we can have Rodney sort of, we can have public works. Have public works evaluate.
Yep.
Identify a certain amount.
Of, of company we have total and company that are.
Yeah.
Need attention fast and then not on a schedule.
Some that are a year, probably three years now.
I hate, I hate to see you guys spending thousands of dollars that have, that's been.
See, see, but I don't, I, that was my concern, that, that the small is, is just too small, and the big is just too.
Too crazy.
It's just too much.
So if you hire these guys per day. A you, you list, hire for a day, two days, whatever.
Well, they'll come in and give you, I can do so many culverts in a day, let them, let them embed like that.
I have a list of culverts this year that need attention.
Five, ten thousand dollars a year to do that.
Yep.
Versus owning that thing.
Oh, yeah.
Same for twenty thousand dollars a year, versus the eighty thousand dollar one, we used to say might not be big enough. Let someone else worry about tinkering on.
I hope it is not twenty thousand.
Well, you know, and I think it just, I think even that we're talking about it, we're looking at it, and we're doing, you know, proactive, trying to make sure, something, I think. It certainly doesn't hurt anything to start compiling a list of the condition of our culverts and then. Identifying where potential, you know, liabilities are and getting ahead of it, I think that this is the perfect first step, not buying equipment. Surveying our current culverts and then making decisions on how to go about after that.
Uh, you know, in the future too, it will give a huge number off in this. And it may say, all right, maybe we split the difference and we do buy a piece of equipment, have our townkeeper take care of it, and we will have some information there and make that decision.
Yeah.
I would hope that it would be a lot cheaper to hire someone. It would be nuts.
Because if we have one that we do and then we've got a law, we've got a record, and we're like, wow, that one, it's like three years from now, it needs to be done again. Maybe we need to look at the surrounding area, because maybe that is a smarter thing to do, so just having that. Having, knowing what we have, knowing what we're responsible for, and knowing what is a potential liability and.
So we'll just, we'll get public works to assess?
Yeah.
And we'll get Richard to get some loose pricing from possible vendors, or one just for some loose pricing? Just as a.
I mean, a lot of our roles have been really.
Yeah, price, okay, that's fine, or whatever you. Start bidding against each other now, if we wanna go one in the summer, get it moving on and on. Right on.
So do you mean the motion they have like?
Yeah. I still thank you, Allied Equipment, for bringing this in to us. Paints the picture, right?
We have to do a business to add, or?
Well, you brought it up, so I'm gonna just take a minute to talk about it real quick. Not get caught before the horse. So you talked about creating an inventory. Of culverts. And one of the things we've been trying to do for years and years is get a road inventory, and they have junk software to do it, or it's stuck to milk. And you're doing segments, and then you've got transitions in staffing, uh, whether it's in my office or up to the garage. I was at a training last week, week before, and they were talking about this new software that is like a Google card. And the camera on top, they use laser technology to shoot out, and they can take an inventory of any asset. Whether it's a tree and measuring the diameter of that tree in the right way, or the canopy the holder reaches. They can check alligator tracks on, and measure those widths and the lengths and condition, give you, uh, your pavement condition assessment. Um, they can inventory stop some, uh, street signs, um. Grades, they can do this on gravel runs, they can do it on paper. It is absolutely intriguing, and it all overlays on a GIS map.
How much is it?
I don't know.
Richard, Richard.
I'm, I'm already moving to find out.
Ri- Richard, talk to me about that, and I think it'd be a wonderful tool, because that sounds like you can develop a lot more information. To be had for the board.
For the whole strategic plan.
You can't, right, the, the town garage does not have the time to. Ert the ability to give all that information.
Two, so they got save on engineering for them too, and go rebuild the road.
True, I mean, it should be deeper, and I'm gonna get the salesperson to talk to room committee, and if they trust a certain room committee, but. It will be budgetary estimates based upon, cause it uses AI to interpret all of this. You don't give your budgetary estimates to replace this section of road, it will also prioritize sections of road.
I mean, that would be pretty nice.
So you all just been, let's do Big O Hill this year, let's do this room this year, it will say, no, you, you wanna go do a half mile on this road, and it will begin your half mile.
But again, we, you just said that. And it, and it, we could, I mean, you, you're gonna, you don't need them anymore. If you have that information, it really does take, cause I don't mean that to sound like, but we have had many discussions. And we've had the list in front of us, and then we also have. Residents of Big O Hill coming down, and why didn't we lie out me on the list? And, 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 and if you had that. Available information with all the detail that this brings. In the table, there it is.
Yeah.
It is public, here it is.
Yeah.
You know, and this is where you stand, so it's not anymore, it, so it takes it out of. Or you just wanna be on the road because you want your road fixed, or you, it, it takes that, it takes that. Asset out, it will put it in the factual, on paper.
Who, who actually compiled all this data for you? You, you, right, you, they do all this, who puts it all, the software company does, or we have to do that in-house?
Software company.
So they want you to be some type of managing.
Yeah, we get to see that.
That rides with this, or it's?
It's a, it's a, it's a software fee, right? So there's gonna be a recurring fee for that software. And then it's, it's a matter of what frequency do you want them to analyze your roads? And so that'll, it's one, two, or three years. Mike and I were kinda talking informally the other days, but you know, we don't need it every year, probably three years is the stretch.
Just help us out.
Yeah.
So, but we're gonna take a look at the freedom to pricing of that, and I mean, that's obviously a major factor.
Well, something like. Well, something like that is so like.
We didn't, we, we didn't get into money aspects, we didn't have that, but I thought just the. Availability of having that volume of information on, at your fingertips to go. You know, I had no idea, it was, you know, I mean, we could sit here and do our best, guess at the meeting is to. You know, we need to take a look at this, and this, and this is bad, and this is bad, and you can see that on the circuit, but this year's actually analyzing it. Way deeper than we've ever done it before.
And I didn't, not, not to sound, well. All you have to do is drive around, right? Nobody has to get out, nobody has to run tape measures, nobody's doing some sophisticated thing, you're driving around at two miles an hour in the town truck, right? So it makes it very easy to do, or a rainy day thing, so when you can be working somewhere else, you could be doing this.
I give it, I don't think we do it, I think you obviously have hired it, don't you?
Oh, really, they do.
And when they do, they're taking all these live shots, so that you're able to take Google Earth over here, you're able to take the live shot of what they capture, they're coming. They're creating their own Google Earth imagery, you know, from a little man on the map, where you're looking at street view, that's all.
I think it's.
I think it's definitely worth seeing. It, it sounds so cool, I'm scared that it's expensive. Really, I, it sounds fantastic. You know, if you wanna detail, we're gonna get.
I've got a breakdown, I'm, I've asked them for the breakdown of what it would cost, because you get your streets, well, then you can do sidewalks, and they'll send you up a little scooter that will go do the sidewalks. Not the right time for us to start sidewalks, but if you want signs or patch bases by hydrants, manhole.
It's about like posted roads, like would it allow, like, is gonna be looking at that and be like, actually, no, that one maybe doesn't need to be posted, or this one does need to be posted to. Some that, say, don't need to be posted?
No, that's how it is. And you, I'll post our roads, we just, you, you. You're gonna get into a pissing contest if you don't post this for a post this one, I think that one just, that, that technology isn't gonna help that, you just need to blanket totally.
I, I'll address that one quickly, because I know that's obviously a pressure of the time. Posting roads is the most responsible thing you can do for about the largest investment that you make through your tax dollars.
Yes.
We throw millions of dollars at roads, and by putting those red posters up, keeps the heavy trucks off, and the material underneath it is soft. And you wanna let heavy trucks pass through, right? But you're gonna have to start giving them seven point five million a year instead of seven hundred and fifty thousand a year, because the roads will crumble.
Yeah.
And you see roads where people abuse it, or you see roads where they're just not posted, the state doesn't post it, and they get a lot more wear and tear on them. Um, we'd be crumbling if we allowed people to walk.
Yeah.
A- as much as it stinks for your guys that have shut down their business pretty much. We're planning three months ahead to strategically locate, that's just what it is, you're protecting your asset. It's, it would be like leaving your town office open all night, unlocked and unattended, okay, we're having a lot of couple offices, but other than that, you know, you paid for it, you ought to be able to use it. It's, it's, it's not.
I remember when Route Eight used to be posted. The state used to post Route Eight till they put the money into it to fix it up to the degree that it is now. So there was a time twenty, twenty years ago where Route Eight was.
Well, it was pulled up to rebuild, I think, and then. Till they rebuilt it.
Till, yeah, when they put the money into it to rebuild it, they actually.
Yeah, well, so, yeah, please, try to get to it, right? Update us after, right? You guys get with it.
I go, I'll move to adjourn.
Uh, yeah, we'll sign them after, unless the board has something else to do.
Well, the other thing is, I say, thank you, Richard, that, thank you, energy. Your county sent up to us. From the board as well, thank you.
Uh, motion, second to adjourn, any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor?